Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Cindy Donnell.
Having been elected to the office of mayor...
Having been elected to the office of mayor...
With N in for said city of Hot Springs.
With N in for said city of Hot Springs.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
And the Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
To the best of my knowledge and ability...
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform all the duties of my said office of mayor.
To perform all the duties of my said office of mayor.
As provided by law.
As provided by law.
Congratulations and welcome.
You guys are embarrassing me now.
Hi, James.
Thank you, yeah. We have Rosa. In the second order of business, as an officer, I now declare an entry for our new councilman. Couple three, you've seen before. We can come down here with us, room. Do you all have your cheat sheets?
Yep.
All right.
And my cheek.
Cheek glasses, whatever it takes. Yeah. We're gonna do them all together. So when we get to the office that you were elected for, you just say your name and the word. I state your name.
Raise your right hand.
Raise your right hand. That's not on my notes. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
Carl Lanchley.
Georgia Holcomb. Having been elected to the office of alderman and for said city of Hot Springs.
Word one.
Word four.
Word two. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
And the Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform all the duties of the office of alderman.
Perform all the duties of my said office of work for alderman.
As provided by law.
As provided by law.
Yay. All right, we're just gonna enjoy these. There we go. The roll call is all present. And would someone like to... Oh, I'm sorry. Wes is not present. I'll recognize that next time, I'll look better. And then we do the pledge. Jackie Malina.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first order of business will be to elect the councilperson officers. I'm gonna be president and vice president. And councilmembers will do that per secret ballot.
Nominations first. For council president.
For council president, thank you. I'd like to nominate someone. Please do. I'd like to nominate Dwight Winnia. He nominated me once, a long time ago or something, so. Stay back.
Yeah.
Thank you. So we have Dwight for president. Any other nominations?
I'll nominate her.
So we will now vote per secret ballot.
Any other nominations?
Any other nominations? I'm still learning the process. Okay.
Move the nomination cease.
And Harley will pick the...
Correct answers will be Dwight or Carl. Mayor can't vote, so. Write it down, fold it, and I'll come around and pick them up. And the successful candidate is Carl.
So now we need nominations for vice president.
I nominate Dwight Winnia.
I nominate Georgia.
Let's see that open, nice breeze coming.
Get a lot of feedback in the speakers. Yeah, you're able.
So three ways, are you wanting the majority or you wanting the top two to go after it? What's your preference?
Let's see if there's a majority, right?
Four for the top vote getter, so that's a majority. If you go that way, that's Georgia.
I'm fine with that. You're fine with that?
Somebody go over that?
Yeah. All right, thank you. That need to be done first. I would like to make a small change to the agenda, if that's okay. The bids for the water fill station, since I have not seen the drawings or any of the history on it, I'd like to remove that from the agenda. That is the third thing from the last on the new business. What makes most difference?
Second.
With the changes.
With the changes.
Do we have a conflict of interest with anyone on the council on any of the items?
We call for a vote.
Call for a vote for the agenda?
Yes.
Oh. Well, just call for a vote then. All in favor?
Aye.
I have training on the 23rd, for those of you who are nervous at this point. Okay. Oh... So do I need to do something about the conflict of interest, or we just agree that we're all good to move forward? All right.
If there is a conflict of interest on any of the items on the agenda, usually the councilperson that has a conflict will express that.
Okay.
Either this time or when that issue comes up on the agenda.
Okay.
And usually it stays from early until some vote.
Okay, thank you. So I need a motion to approve the minutes from the June 16th regular meeting. You don't want to vote or anything? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I make a motion to approve the special meeting on July 2nd. All those...
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay. We'll move to a motion on the bills in between, the total $177,000, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty-two cents.
Uh-oh. Second.
Make a motion to approve the current claims.
We gotta vote on it.
All those in favor of the bills in between?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Make a motion to approve the current claims of $284,640 and 14 cents. This is a .33 difference from what you have in your package due to a .33 difference for Powerhouse. And it was... So it's .33 more than what you have in your packages. Powerhouse was the item that was increased by .33.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
One second.
All those in favor? Do you have any?
Any discussion?
Any discussion?
I do.
All right.
Paper towels is a street side. Six rolls per box for $61.06. $244 total. I'm thinking it may be a little bit secret. Dollar store or something. I don't know what kind of paper towels are, but $61 for a box of six paper towels, that's pretty expensive. Unless they're something special.
I think that would be a case.
Which is six per box, $61 a box.
Depends on where they order them from. Mine from Hilliard costs about the same.
I feel chemical and...
That's six rolls.
It's about the same price I pay from Hilliard.
I'm sorry.
It's about the same price I pay from Hilliard for mine. Most of the industrial chemical places are all about the same price.
And these might be the bigger rolls like you give, I don't know, but still.
They're made for the special paper towel rollers, so if you change the paper towels you have, then you change the type of roller you have, or just go to kitchen-sized paper towel, we go through quite a lot of those.
They have the ones that fit in big containers like in bathrooms for hand towels. That bigger zone.
And you're gonna have to have them spread out through the shop.
I need to know, Harley was busy today, I couldn't ask him.
Any more comments? Communications? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Next is the communications from the public, and Mike, you are up. Melissa.
How are you doing, everybody? I'm Mike Close with the Hot Springs Bills Football and Cheerleading. Spoke to you guys, I think it was January, quite a few months ago. Anyway, we just got on our feet, getting the program going. It's, for those that don't know, it's a full contact football league for first through fifth grade for boys. Cheerleading program, girls, first through sixth. First and second plays together, third and fourth plays together, and it's a separate fifth grade team. Everybody East Rivers is doing it. We're the last southern part of the state team that are bigger town that has a team. Getting a role in this year, when we first started, each kid for football, the player fee was $210, which is, I mean, I have two kids, I can't afford $420. So we started going to local businesses, the nonprofits, and it totally raised $11,000. That got it down to $75 a kid, which, we had another local business that donated $750, so we have 10 kids scholarships. We found 10 kids in the community who otherwise wouldn't be able to play off of that money. So, you know, it's not based on economic at all right now. We sponsor quite a few kids, make a grade for them. Now we're running into getting jerseys for everybody, because we had to, of that $11,000, $10,500 went to these. Right now we have 68 kids signed up. We have 44 football players, 24 cheerleaders. The first year startup on anything is crazy. Right now, per football player, for jerseys, it's gonna be about $70, that's pants and jerseys. It'll be half that cost next year, it's older-y, the pants. Cheerleading uniforms, I don't know what we go with, $80 to $100 a girl. And it'll be half of that uniform for us next year as well. Still need to get all our practice supplies, the dummies, the pads, water bottles, footballs, everything that goes along with it. We are one of the few associations, there's 12 associations in the Black Hills Football League. We're one of the few associations that help out with the player fee. So if we hadn't helped with player fee and said, "Okay, go, $210, you can play," we'd probably have a quarter of the kids, but we'd be able to purchase all the practice supplies that we need now. We've done fundraisers with t-shirts, like the one I have on. Two home games for sure this year, so that'll bring in revenue to the city, possibly a third game. So basically, I was seeing if we could get a little help from the city with getting the jerseys, practice equipment, all of that purchased.
I have a question, Mike, it's for the helmet thing. You said it was full contact?
It is, it's...
So what kind of helmets are... How many are there?
The actual league provides the helmets. Each football helmet, high school, college, NFL, any helmet like that, has a five-year lifespan on it. Being that we're a new association, we're gonna have all brand-new helmets. They'll wear the bills. I would've liked to have been the Raiders, but I probably got hung, I probably chose But all of our gear, I have some sampled here at my house, it's good-fitting shoulder pads. We've, what is it, August, actually July 20th, we do a weighing of the kids. And then, we're all, we all know how to measure the kids, make sure the equipment fits right. I actually go to Sioux Falls July 19th for a Heads Up Safety Program, it's put on nationwide, teaches the kids how to tackle instead of hurt themselves, which, once they get into high school, they'll know how to, you won't have to worry about injuries. I'll touch on the injuries, for anybody who's worried about the injuries involved with the youth, you're gonna get more concussions playing soccer than this age. You can go on YouTube and you can see first and second graders playing football, and they basically flip hit each other and they fall over. It's not guys my size, we're running super fast with each other, it's quite the event. Even if you don't have kids involved, come check this out, you'll get a good laugh. Another point on that, on the, come watch this, is there's no pay fee. We don't charge a fee to come watch the games. Everything is free for that, so if you don't have a kid, but you wanna come check this out once?
What's your dates?
The game dates?
Yeah.
The games start the first weekend in September. We don't have the actual schedule set up yet. We play seven games. We do all enough in those seven games, go to the playoffs. If you win the two playoff games, you actually have a Super Bowl, it's held by the school of mines, out on the Asher River. So it's, there's four Rapid City teams, Serge, Spirit Fish, Gulf Hooch, Custer's, first year or last year, Hill City and us, that's supposed to be our first year, Wall, Douglas, Black Hawk, quite a few local communities, the drive isn't, some of those towns be a little longer drive, but all the games are on Saturdays.
So there's insurance in that registration fee?
Correct, I actually have, I'm looking at the insurance right here, which is covered by the league.
So how much would you ask for this?
The, to cover the jerseys as we stand right now, would be $6,350. And like I said, next year it'd be half of that, it's just the startup cost. So we can reuse the pants, but the jerseys, that's part of the package, is that kids get to keep their personalized jerseys at the end of the year.
And what about supplies?
Supplies? You have to ask for more?
You can try.
So I said, "Ask." $9,000 is what we've got right now, bare bones, that would give us all our practice supplies, nothing fancy to have, all the practice supplies, water bottles, the tackling dummies, the jerseys so they can separate themselves. But the $63.50 would definitely cover our jerseys, and the nine would set us up and we could practice there if we had to. Practice starts the 4th of August.
Do we have $9,000 in contingency, and can we make a motion on this? Since it's already part of the agenda?
You can make a motion since it's on the agenda. I would have to do a little looking at the budgets, I know there's some recreation budget...
Is this just kids in Hot Springs, or is this Fall River County?
Fall River County. We have three kids from Edgemont. Unfortunately, we haven't, actually, excuse me, we have one little guy signed up from Morris.
Would county, have you asked county to help in here or not?
Not yet.
I personally would feel like we should recommend that we calculate if we adapt to that budget.
Well, I think the issue is, is after a budget, they've already started, they start September...
August 4th starts practice, games start September 4th.
So they need their equipment by really the end of the month.
Yeah, games jerseys, if you have to order, probably mid-August at the latest to get them.
We should have money in contingency for that to manage.
Well, there's money in contingency, you know, but we've got a heating unit here that we're dealing with, a little later on in the budget. You've used $28,000 of the contingency already. We still have the airport hangar issue that we have to decide where that money's gonna come from, for sure.
Would we be able to wait till our next meeting?
And that's the beginning of August?
No, no, our second meeting is July.
What date would that be?
21st, sure.
Okay.
So how much are you wanting me to find?
$9,000.
Can we ask county for somebody, maybe come down there?
How about the school this week?
Since it's not a school affiliated, we have to ask...
Where are you gonna play the games?
On the actual high school. The head coach is part of our, our forward, on the fourth group as well.
Okay, and the insurance you guys have?
When you first talked to us, I thought, you said you weren't gonna put any...
When I first talked to that, that's why I thought you guys...
The first time, it sounded like you were gonna be able to cover everything.
Yeah. Made my initial pitch.
And the rest for other funding, which you said you pulled in about $1,000 worth of extra funding.
I would prefer, I'm not looking at the game, but no, I just wanna make sure we have enough to cover what we've got right now.
Yeah, any questions?
So we'll put this on the agenda for the next meeting, and we'll all talk about it before then.
Thank you.
When do you have to order the jerseys?
I would say we, at the latest, the first week of August.
So you don't need them for practice, you know, we have practice, we just put the practice in quarters.
Are there any more communications from the public?
Here. I have a question to... I have a question to ask the city. The city, I've been a longtime member of The Plunge, and the city now owns The Plunge, so I'm directing my question to you. Today, at the height of the tourist season, with a large busload of adults who like to use the health club, one hot tub has been out for several weeks, the other hot tub was cold, the steam room was being cleaned, and the sauna had some maintenance that needed being done. Our new manager was doing the maintenance, which I don't think is his job. My question of the city is, why isn't there a backup maintenance person when the other one is not available?
Who answers that question?
Chris is otherwise preoccupied due to some legal issues, so we currently do not have an available maintenance person. We did have a right-hand person that's been helping Chris, that has been doing some of the maintenance, but he is quite young, and he's under 18, so he isn't, you know, well-versed in, he'll get a job done when he's told what needs to be done, and...
Does the city have a backup person that could pinch-hit in an emergency during the peak season? I guess that's what I want to know.
We can contract out maintenance as needed.
Until Chris returns, yes.
And we have already discussed the hot tub issue today, and there is a plan to move forward with giving out a pair quickly.
Wasn't that maintenance person supposed to be for the whole city Osprey? When we first hired him, it was supposed to be for the whole city. Am I not correct?
We had talked about it, but we were focusing on this, getting a plan up around...
I knew he was gonna stay down there for quite a while, but wasn't he supposed to be for the whole city? So maybe we should, have a backup person for us.
Clearly, the events of the last week that I'm aware of, all suggest that's a very good idea. Thank you. Any other communication?
I was in the parade on the 4th of July, and it was a mess because there was no cops available to control the streets. And I wanna know why, if we have cops in town, why don't we, why didn't we have them out on the 4th of July controlling traffic? Because I was in the parade with the ambulance service, and I noticed we had traffic trying to get through the parade, and we did have volunteers, but since we do have cops in town, isn't that their job to help control traffic?
Mike, you started again.
I can answer some of that.
I know some of it, but if, since you're here, if you don't mind, sharing?
We were told we were not going to do crowd control, not on, I led the parade, Chief Evans came up to call, so I led the parade. We have a eight-man department. How many intersections are there? Are you gonna call every officer out to do overtime? Because I don't feel that you have an overtime.
And some should be sleeping at that time.
So a lot of just got off at eight?
What was decided prior to the parade getting going was that the Legion riders were going to do the streets and crowd control. And I saw many of them at the, at the street intersections where the parade was going, so... And as the parade moved forward, they would get in their line and move forward with it. So they did do the job. So they did do the job and I thought they did pretty good.
And it was the first time.
Yeah, the cops, the cops were available throughout the city if they had any calls.
I would say we would find them.
Chris, I'll talk to chief and just see if there's something we could possibly do. It was the first time that the city offered to do traffic control for the parade. So we need to thank them for their effort and see if there's area for improvement.
They all took the DOT Traffic Guard Traffic Control classes that the Department of Transportation puts on, so all of the Legion Riders that were involved in the traffic control were trained.
Reserve police officers used to do that, but we only have two reserves right now. They won't put on another class because they said nobody's qualified to be in there, I guess. I might.
Chris, if there's something specific, you know, afterwards, we can talk about it, but definitely something we'll talk to the chief about.
I believe there was an article in the Hot Springs paper this last week that explained what we're talking about here, how they were doing volunteer work.
Thank you. Emily had her hand up, we'll let her speak now.
Hi. A lot of you know me, some of you don't. For the last year, I have been the Facility Director at Evans Plunge and we all know how big of a learning experience this has been for a lot of you sitting on this council, for me, for a lot of the employees, volunteers, the advisory board. In the last year, I have done the changeover at the Plunge. I did the whole, helped with numerous employees, volunteers with the entire remodel of the building. In April, certain, certain stances with my assistant manager Sarah Paddock was let go and along with my maintenance man. Since then, the maintenance man position has been replaced by Chrissy Ella Pleter. And tonight, TD Schmidt will be sworn into the Facility Director position. I'm here tonight to hand you over my credit card, my Sam's Club membership and my keys to my office and all of the doors of the Plunge, and we should always be back.
Thanks, Emily. Thanks for your hard work. Appreciate it. Any other communications from the public? She can ask all our supplies for later.
What was your?
We'll do that right now.
Good. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
I know Craig's just great to bring our problem up.
Sure. Okay. Many of you on the council know Vicki and I. We spoke to you about a runoff problem before. Carol Anne, you were up a couple of years ago. Georgia was just there, Craig. You are, your city crew is deflecting all of the runoff water from Hickory directly onto our property, which I think is totally unethical, if not illegal. It's just raising hell with us down below. Everything gets washed out. The last rain we had, what, two, three weeks ago, it was an inch and four tenths at my house in less than an hour. You can't believe the amount of water that has come down off that that you channel onto us and I, I just, I can't allow it anymore. I, I'm, for years and years and years, I've talked about this problem to various, you know, Catlet, I mean, various people, De Vries, and I've gotten absolutely nowhere. They listen to me and that's the last I ever hear of it. Something has to be done with the water coming off of Hickory. It shouldn't be, you know, let me ask you this. If your neighbor was channeling all of his runoff water onto your property, wouldn't, wouldn't you think that was a little unethical? I think it certainly is. It's causing, it's causing immense problems for us. I don't know what you can do with that on Hickory, but you have city engineer, you know, people that are supposed to decide what to do about these problems.
Jim, I know we talked probably three, four weeks ago and I think it was before that really bad storm, I think that was about a week and a half ago. I talked to Harley the next day about it. I had no authority, of course, to talk to him at that point, but it's definitely on my list of things to entertain. I went up there after that storm, that, the hail and the bad storm that night and saw firsthand in the midst of it what was going on.
You did, and I thank you very much for that.
Yes, so we definitely have an issue we need to address there.
And I also.
I want to, I want to thank you, the city, for our manhole cover was raised. I think Craig really helped me out on that. I was really afraid it was going to silt in. It had about, I don't know, four or five inches, three or four inches of silt on it when the cable guys came and, you know, were doing the underground system. They didn't even know it was there. I had to show them it was there. So I know that quite possibly that had the, you know, opportunity to silt in and I would have been the first one to notice it. And I'm really glad that guy raised an ample amount, so I think that problem's solved. Another problem I have is right out on our street. The city comes along with a front-end loader, skid loader or blade, and all of the rock that comes down the hill, they don't replace, they don't put it back where it belongs. I've got ruts in front of my house, probably, oh, I don't know, six, eight inches wide, six, eight inches deep. And instead of scooping that rock back up and filling it in, they push it onto the lot below me. I'm sure that guy below us really wants all that gravel on his, on his lot. I mean, when we were fourth and fifth graders, we were putting the round peg in the round hole and square peg in the square hole. You know, I mean, when you see rock like that, you got to think to yourself, where did this come from? You know, and replace it. And I was told by the city foreman, oh, it won't stay anyway. So there's, you know, no point in putting it back there. He said, we got to bring that black, you know, from the chopped up blacktop, that will hold. Well, I'll tell you what, half the rock that's there is that black stuff and it's come all the way from Hickory. So that black stuff won't stay there either. So maybe there is no permanent fix to that, but at least the ruts can be filled so that someone can drive on it again.
Well, I'm going to put together a committee to see what we can do there as a city to fix that.
Since the time you and I talked, I found out that all the storm drains up at Atwood drop right in that rock.
I did.
All the storm drains on, on that street above where Froman and Atwood and M. Lee, the storm drains there dropped right in behind your house. Why, I don't know. They, they don't go to a sewer or down to the river, they drop in that canyon behind you.
Something has to be done. I mean, I realize we are not the only people in Hot Springs with a runoff problem or even a problem in general, but every year, for years and years and years, I would get, get the boys out and get the wheelbarrow and the shovels and we'd replace all that rock. Took hours to do it. The city never came along with a blade or anything. Now, when they do, they just scoop it down into the lot below. Something, something has to change here.
We have that.
I mean, if you, if you could have put a guy on a blade, put a guy on a front-end loader, at least he should not have to know how to use it, so.
That gravel in that empty lot was going to be cleaned up because I brought it to their attention that it was there and we need to clean it up, but evidently we didn't.
Right down, right out the corner of my house, where you saw, the rock is four or five inches thicker than it was two years ago.
It was brought up, it just hasn't been fixed. We need to fix it.
You do need to fix it. Will you, will you let me know your time schedule on?
I will.
Doing something with the.
When I find out, I'll let you.
Do you have any, as of now, do you have any thoughts on what to do with the water on Hickory? Can I speak to that? We instructed Tracy to come up with a storm drain plan, the whole area up there, and budget that in next year. Next year?
That's the budget coming out July.
Yeah, it'll be, this budget here will be due in a couple of months.
The, the problem with the storm sewer, in order to do it properly, you need to start at the bottom and work up. The closest storm sewer is at the corner of Menicata, that, or down on Menicata, so the piping would have to start at Menicata and work its way up to York Street or up Locout and then up to Hickory Street. We're talking seven total blocks, I think, of storm sewer ultimately.
Well, I agree with you, start at the bottom, work up, but I've been talking to city officials and city councilmen for many years now. I mean, the start of this should have been a while ago and not next year.
In 2010, a letter went to you with an option for, for handling the storm water up there and at least in the records that were at City Hall, there was no response to the correspondence that had been mailed to you in 2010.
Did you mail it to 811 Walnut or post office box 459? We won't get it.
That I, that I don't know. It was before my time there, but it was in the file as I was researching the drainage issue for you after I had happened.
We didn't get it. We, we changed, in the phone book, we changed it to our PO box because if it goes to 811 Walnut, it just gets thrown away.
Lost.
And that's probably what happened there.
That could very well have been what happened.
You would have heard from me and I got the letter.
That was an option, but it's not, it wasn't as good of option as what I think we can do with what Tracy's working on now. What Tracy's working on will be a permanent fix. That could have been probably just a temporary solution because I think it would have created some other issues.
The problem with pitching the road the other way is it's going to send it all into your neighborhood.
I did talk to.
So we ought to find a happy medium somewhere.
So can we plan on getting back to you in a couple of weeks with?
I'm sorry, Georgia, I'm going to have an order.
Can we plan on getting back to you in a couple of weeks and make sure that the solution is presented to you? We have been doing a lot of that up on Evans Heights because it is a problem. We've lost eight, seven feet of the hill up above the Plunge area, so, I mean, it's not something we aren't aware of, but I do appreciate you coming in and talking to us. We'll get back to you.
I appreciate it and help you. In, in the meantime, if nothing's going to be done for a year, perhaps, the city owns skid loader, front-end loader, don't they? Could you send them up and have them back drag some of that rock, that, some of that gravel instead of just pushing it onto the neighbor's property in the meantime? I mean, every time, you know, we're going to get, we're going to get two or three of these big rains a year. Traditionally, we do. And, you know, I, I realize I'm not the only person that's going to have gravel displaced in the city, but I, I was told by the city street foreman that, you know, we don't have time to do all that, you know, just make a quick fix. Well, you know, making a quick fix really doesn't help anybody anyway. I mean, if it takes longer to do it right, at least part of everything is being done the correct way, working towards a finish instead of just doing everything half-hazardly, you know, and then going on from there.
Mayor Donnell has already suggested that she wants to put a committee together to get this taken care of. Can we have that opportunity to do that and get back to you in, in two weeks?
Two weeks?
Two weeks.
Next council meeting?
I'll be waiting here.
Okay.
Thanks for listening.
Thanks, Jim. Any other communications from the public? You're hiding them.
While, while you're doing this street assessment, would you look at the streets?
For drainage?
Yeah. We have one drain for businesses and when we had that rain, I had water in my business, so I appreciate it.
All right. Thanks, Jerry. Anybody else? I'm going to go to personnel. Also, that is just for your information, that, as Emily alluded to, we have a new Plunge Facility Director and I'd like to make a motion to accept our new Plunge Facility Director. Please do. We need a smiley face.
I'll make the motion that we, we install Theodore as our director.
I'll say it.
All those opposed?
No. I'm looking at the keys here.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.
Just as an information, Theodore was, spent a lot of time with me this morning going over the paperwork side of what his job could be. Eleven-thirty, he did, hit it hard up at the Plunge, so those of you that were hanging around the Plunge today, seen him and by 5:15, he was down here bringing a whole list of what he needed answers to the new mayor he left, so.
Yes, he did.
So he's already hitting it hard and he's identified several things that we've been hearing concerns and complaints about, so he's your man, Mary.
Got a question over there, Mary.
Does Theodore have last name because he's not on the agenda anymore?
Yes, he is.
No, he's part of Facility Directors. Oh, last name?
I moved it up on the agenda. Her, he was on, well, there's no name now.
Yeah, there's still no name.
Theodore Schmidt.
Want to spell your last name, Theodore, for the press?
It's Theodore T.H.E.O.D.O.R.E. Schmidt, S.C.H.M.I.D.T.
Frank the beer.
Thanks, Theodore.
Oh, okay, I didn't hear you. Oh, I didn't hear, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. And we pulled you up on the agenda because we know you've had a very long day and you can gracefully leave now if you'd like, okay?
Why don't you hand him the keys so he has the set of keys he's going to need?
I haven't looked at it yet. I'm not giving you the envelope, so I'm not sure what that is yet, so.
Thank you very much.
I'll see you in the morning. Thank you. The other personnel, it's just FYI, it's, that's, okay. We have a first reading on ordinance. I am supposed to read the title. It's ordinance 1144, an ordinance amending chapter 27-a of the revised ordinances of the City of Hot Springs, Hot Springs, South Dakota, by amending section 27-a relating to front and rear setback requirements in a mixed-use district.
The change, main change is to change it from a 35-foot setback requirement to a 25-foot setback requirement. And then from rear yard, changing it from a 25-foot setback to a 10-foot setback on the rear yard, so it gives more buildable or usable space for a property owner to make better use of their lots.
I make the motion that we accept the changes.
Your, your front setback, that's 25 feet for all, all properties?
Just mixed use.
But all properties in that area? So residential, commercial, because your other one spells out commercial.
This is any mixed-use district.
Isn't that all of?
So regional, personal.
This is $1,000 for the.
Yeah.
That's for all the College Hill and University, isn't it?
I don't have an app here, so I need to make sure.
This is, we're building a small property, so.
Did someone request this change?
Yes.
Through planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning recommended change.
Why doesn't this affect all areas of the city of Hot Springs? It's going to be an ordinance setback. It ought to be.
It's 40, but it is 25 foot per house. Residential, 40. In the alley, I believe it's 10 feet too.
And no one residential in the alley is 10 foot.
Alex Park.
There is a 5-foot in the alley.
What it was, they have the 35 foot and there are people having problems with buildings on block, they're on build. No, I agree, so I'm sure we do see most times property, but we can't use the rear end.
You made a. You made a motion?
Second.
Why, second, I did?
What we have been doing previously is, is the motion setting a second reading at the next meeting. Sending this to a second reading.
Motion did send it to a second reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Okay. Greg, we have some old business on a hedge property?
We do.
Can you help us with that?
My old safety partner and I went over this with Bimby Hats. My old safety partner and I went over this with Benny Hatt, and they're quite, quite wild the other day. And it was our recommendation that we give Benny and them the okay to go ahead and put the new roof on that building and paint it, because the building's very sound, and I have a cement floor and everything. And give them the okay to leave that garage on the property, to agree to leave it on there as soon as they get it all fixed up. The property's going to stay five, seven lots?
Seven lots.
They're not going to split it up or anything, so it's not going to be a problem when it's set.
I take issue with that, because at the last meeting that this came up at, it was decided by the council unanimously that the garage had to go in accordance with the order from the court.
But the order from the court said the city could change that if they wanted to.
But we didn't.
I don't believe we voted.
No, you said, you didn't vote on that, it was tabled and sent to the Public Safety Committee for the meeting, which then that party left that.
That's why I brought.
Well, then I take issue with it.
And I personally went up and looked at that little garage, that building looks worse than it is. It's a nice straight little garage.
If I make a motion, we allow that to stay on the property?
Second.
Because I have, the only thing that I have, and I drove up there too, I'm not, and looked at the little building, oh, it looks like a really solid little building. I didn't walk up to it, but what I could see looked like, I mean, it's not fallen down. I guess the only problem I have is, if we let you guys leave your little garage on the next one that we tear down, are we going to leave the storage shed, are we going to leave the chicken coop? Are we setting a precedence that we don't want here?
And another thing to add to that is giving up the $18,000 in fines that were levied by the court with regard to that property. What are we going to do? You know, you're going against the court order.
No, we're not.
We have removed the house that was falling down, and 67 outbuildings that were in very poor shape, and we cleaned up the property, and we've kept it mowed.
The property looked 1,000 percent better the last time.
I agree, I went up there and looked at it also.
That little garage can be saved, and it can be easily moved if it comes the time you guys hold the lots, I mean, it could be easily moved. I just don't see the need to tear something down just to tear it down. And as far as, we'll have to take, take each of these issues on a case-by-case basis. The chicken coop's fallen down, no, we're not going to let you keep it, tear it out.
Who made tour of the chicken coop, Bob, did it?
What did you do with the chicken?
They went in the freezer years ago. There used to be chicken.
Okay, we have a vote, all those in favor of letting the?
Roll call, sorry?
Yes.
Call the vote.
All those in favor of?
Call the vote by, by me.
Roll, so we call the roll call vote, they have a choice if they want to roll call votes. Ashley?
No.
Holmes?
Yes.
McCombe?
Yes.
Romi?
Yes.
Schwarzenbach?
Yes.
Tesher?
Yes.
Queenia?
Yes.
Vote passes, one, two, three, four, five, six to one.
Okay.
Now, we expect that to be all nice and clean and painted.
Well, I actually would like to have that done by the end of July, the new roof and the paint. You know, I don't want to leave this open-ended. I think, I think they've, they've given you a lot of leeway here, and let's get that done by the end of July.
You want to make a motion on that to get it?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't understand the process, but I'd really like it to have an end date on there.
Motion to have them finish the painting, the roof, with regard to that garage by the end of July.
I'll second.
Will be a problem?
Everybody always stretched on that property up there. It went from year to year to year to year to year.
You have it.
We've been have this now for eight or 10 years.
When the city council let us go in there in November, two weeks had out.
So, the, the issue is end of July, we can take it or leave it, if you don't want to go by that, then we'll, we'll start over here, wherever I can, but I would like it done by the end of July. All right, so, we had a motion, second, and we need to vote on that, then?
Yes.
Is this all in favor?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
So, two ayes. Three noes. Carol Andrews, a no. So, it's a three to four.
Moving to new business? Just making sure we can move to new business now. The first item is the Mueller center heat pump proposals.
In your packet, you have the low bid, I do have all three bids that were received here, we're having trouble with the unit in the, help me, Chris?
Theater, the large unit, the theater, my main unit.
And this is a full replacement of that unit. All of the other bids are higher than the one that was in your packet. Al Cornell, we only have one, you only have one in the packet.
So, they all not include the electric? Are they all the same name?
Price quote on the other proposals included sheet metal modifications, electric hookup, labor, self-coop, taxes, five-year warranty, that's all the same as the bid in your packet, and the highest bid of 19,800. Remove existing unit, new duct work, new water piping, reconnect electric service, new vibration insulators, reconnect thermostat, start up and check unit.
But it does not include electrical. 14,681 does not include electrical.
The Al Cornell bid doesn't? I thought it was on there.
It says right here.
Is there another bid that includes everything?
Yeah, the other two bids specifically say electric hookup.
What are those?
15,700 from DNR service, and 19,800 from GNR controls.
G and R?
G and R as in Robert, yes.
Trouble.
Controls.
Well, to be honest, I guess I didn't see that on there for the Al Cornell. I mean, as it is right now, I have no air conditioning in the theater. My main unit is down. If we have to, I guess I would like to call Al Cornell tomorrow and see either why it wasn't on there, or how much it would be to add that. The other bid, DNR, they were just more or less, I put a bid in with them for comparison. I haven't been happy with their service in the past, they put in several units here, and the service after the fact hasn't been, it's been less than to be desired. The GNR?
Have you documented that?
What's that?
Have you documented that?
That was before I took over. It was all when Laura was here.
Well, you know, one of the things that we have to do when we go up for bids is the law states we have to take the lowest bid. Now, with everything put together, we don't know what Al Cornell is going to come back with.
No, I know.
With the electrical.
I know, and that's.
If it's more than $1,000, ENR is the low bidder.
Yeah, well, I mean, it is what it is, I guess.
I think maybe we should table this until you find out, or do we have to rebid it?
Well, you don't have to rebid it.
The only problem is, unless you don't say anything, they're going to know how much electrical is. So, to me, that would be a problem.
I agree with you there, too. So, I, you know, with consideration of that, we're not going to rebid it.
No, that was my suggestion, I would just like the chance to call them in the morning and let them know that that wasn't on there and ask them why.
You can either table it or take no action.
To be honest, I didn't, it's an oversight on my part, I didn't, I looked over the others, and I must not have read that when I was reading the low bid.
Well, it's an item on the agenda, so I, I say that we have to table this until further information is.
Second.
Okay. We'll call them first thing in the morning.
All right, thanks.
Yep.
Call the vote.
To table it?
Yeah.
I got one more question. Do you got any big events set for the theater?
No, not this month. Coming into August, we have a few things.
What sort of delivery time did any three of these?
Well, GNR told me that I was out six weeks for ordering a unit, but that was from GNR. I mean, I wouldn't think that, the, the unit that Al Cornell bid was the identical unit that GNR bid me, same brand, same model, same everything. So, I would imagine it'd be pretty right on track with GNR.
It talks about putting in different ducts and everything, are the ducts working?
No, it doesn't need any of the duct work, they, I think that they just put that in there to cover what they do, all three people came and looked at the unit and looked at what needed to be done.
There's quite a bit of difference in the cost here because of that.
Right, right.
To me, that's quite a bit.
Well, GNR was going to put, they were going to put a different, you know, I can't think what they call it, but like a backup compressor on the, on the unit, which added several thousand dollars to it. And I, GNR, they're a very expensive company. I got a, I got a pretty hefty bill today just from a few things that they came down and did. I was actually going to speak to Wes about it tonight, but he's not here.
I kind of agree with Georgia, why would they have duct work on there if they're not going to do it? Is that part of the bid?
Well, they have to.
That doesn't make sense, they have it in there, especially if there's none in there.
Well, they have to, they have to do a little bit of duct work to it to get it, to match up with what's there. That unit that's in there is the original unit, it's 20 years old, it's the last one that's in there, or the last original that's in there.
What is the ground source water?
That's what my whole building runs on. The, it's a ground source heat pump.
Isn't that what we have now?
Yes.
If it's already there, why do they have to, why do they put in the ground source water? If it's already there.
They would tie into.
This, this to me sounds like they're beefing up this bid to put in a cheaper unit and get more money for it.
Al Cornell?
Doesn't make sense to me.
Al Cornell, the lowest bid? Is that what you're saying?
14,681 dollars, it says ground source water. If it's already there, they don't have to do it. Why is it in their bid?
They're tying into the existing one that's there.
And they're charging you to dispose of the unit?
Yes.
Do you have an itemized?
Why?
All three of them do.
Why don't we just haul it out to the landfill and our scrap pile?
Let's keep the old unit.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I mean, I'm going to have to, we talked about this, and with the freon and everything that was in the compressors and all the stuff and pulling it out of there.
Don't cost that much of the freon drain.
Okay.
I just, you know, I see a thousand, less than $1,000 difference between the two. And one of the other ones included all the taxes and stuff, this does not.
Well, by comparison, the unit that we put in six years ago, five years ago, from DNR in the gym, which is probably the same size as the one that's in the theater, maybe a little bit bigger, they charged us 17,000 for.
Well, I, we've got a motion to table, and there's a second.
Okay.
Vote on it, and get it done, and get the other information.
Okay.
All those in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed. The next item is the airport, heating and air conditioning?
Ed is here from the airport, as well as John, the chairman of the airport advisory board. We have two bids for the unit at the airport, and the one that's in your packet is the low bid, the other one is 5,630 dollars and 60 cents for bill TV.
Make a motion, make step Nelson.
Does not include 220 electric? So, we've got to have 220 wiring under that?
It does, 440, it says electrical right underneath.
Is that, is that what that's talking about? He added that for the electrical?
So, the bid is 4,740 dollars.
I think we should, is the heater worth bid out there?
It's an old heater. Very old.
Consider another 450, we can get the heat pump to.
It does have air conditioner and heat, don't it?
Yeah.
Got the whole unit.
Heat pump is different than this.
This has both of them, heat in.
But they're two different parts.
One of them's just for air, and the other one has the heat pump.
Oh, you mean this one here?
Type of heater, is 450 dollars if you go with the heat pump for dual fuel operation.
Oh, so.
The option to upgrade.
What's, what are the two dual fuels, propane and?
I think they're heating with propane now.
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, you got the one with the electric, right? Because at the first bid, we had to adjust that up.
So, it's an extra 450 for the heat part unit of that, on top of that 4,000?
No, that's on the heat pump.
If you want the heat pump, it's more.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
But the furnace is 93 percent efficient.
Okay, I see. Furnace and air conditioners in this one, and then the heat pumps more.
Yeah.
But it does increase your fuel on the propane.
Yeah, it makes it more useful.
And it increases your electrical.
Just gives us the option, Nelson goes up on her fuel.
Yes, it is.
I'd like for part of it, but I don't like that maybe go here. Let's all do a few pictures.
So, what are we coming up with?
You have to add some.
Yeah, 190 dollars?
Yep.
And what was the rest of the bid?
56.
56, 30.
It's still cheaper with the heat pump.
5190 if you add the heat pump.
I'll change my motion to add the heat pump with that, so we can go electrical or propane.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Why were I?
For the new board members, that was a budgeted item for this year in the airport ledger.
Yeah, we're on the airport, I got a question for the council. We have purchased, came out of our budget money, some water line pipe for a fire hydrant over to the tractor shed.
Can you speak up for more closer? Not be so shy.
You're going to do the same thing, dude. I requested a water line going out to our tractor shed for a fire hydrant and a pre screw spigot. And two times the city has come out, dug holes to find water. And two times the city has come out, dug holes to find the water line and filled it in both times. Because what I understand, certain members of council have opposed-
It's not on the agenda, it's not in your budget that we cannot afford to do that this year. You have a certain budget. You're way over it now. You're spending money going out.
If you're setting up a fire hydrant out there, I guess that's fire protection, and that falls under the rural water system.
They already did that.
I talked to them today. We got one hydrant they supply over by the new hangar. Any other hydrants, water lines that-
Is that a fire hydrant or just a regular water hydrant?
Fire hydrant. And-
Why do you need two if you got one out there?
Well, they're further apart. We got the new glider hangar out there. We got the tractor shed. And on ALP shows right next to the tractor shed that we got an FBO out there, lots of places for that. I'm just looking ahead for-
And that's why, maybe next year we can put in the budget, but we just don't have it this year. That's always too-
We need water for that single-engine air tanker that fights fires. We got that set up. Now, if we get a crop duster in, which we have had, instead of both of them nursing off of the same hydrant, we can supply water, they can both run at the same time without having one weight on the other, it's the whole-
You both know I support the airport, I understand. You both know I support the airport.
Yes.
We just don't have the money right now to do it in the airport budget.
How much does it cost to come out there twice and dig a hole and find a water line, then fill it up and leave again? I guess, my thinking was, as long as we were there, why didn't we finish the trench? The pipe is laying there and is paid for. Came out of the budget-
That will go back in your budget, because the water department probably pay for it and use it.
Everything's laying there.
I know.
Why was it dug up twice? I'm not understanding.
The first time, Georgia, it was dug up, and then they reburied it because they didn't know they had permission from the water district.
The water board wanted it.
So they filled the hole up. And then the water board said, yeah, okay, you can go dig it up.
So who okayed that? They didn't go through my committee, so who okayed the water?
The water district okayed it.
Crazy, crazy. Who gave Tracy the okay to do that?
He's in charge of the airport.
Safety committee's in charge of the airport.
How long of a line is it?
Oh, from here to the other end of the building, other side of the theater, probably.
It goes from the highway into the hangar?
No.
No, no, no.
Goes from the driveway.
From the ditch right there.
Well, that's the highway, right?
Yeah, from the driveway. But it's from here to the other end of the theater, maybe. It's just a trench, and the pipe's laying there.
Across the street to the house across the street.
It's not from the highway. It's halfway down the driveway is where it's at, roughly.
It's right along the fence there. It's-
How far from the highway to the terminal? Where is it located in that distance?
It's right as you turn in at the terminal. It's at the terminal. Where, you know, where you turn in the gravel parking lot? That's where they dug it up twice. And it just has to go to the tractor shed, which is across the fence from here to the, either in the building.
So why was it dug up, is what I'm asking?
Well, they dug it up to install it, and then they thought they needed to have permission that maybe the water district was supposed to install it, so then they filled it-
The council got into the middle of it, or the council committee got in the middle of it and said, we're not putting in a fire hydrant that fault river water users should be putting in, so the project was stopped.
But they've already put in what they're gonna put in. The rest is up to us.
We never said to stop.
I think we did.
Hydrant's laying there, the pipe's laying there, the hole's been dug twice and filled twice.
Everything's there.
It's all there. All they got, it's just last week they filled the hole in it.
I didn't know they went out there the first time. I didn't do nothing for that. I had nothing to do the first time. Second time I did. Save them idea.
I told them leave the back over there, and I'd had one in then.
Yeah, we could've had it in half a day.
You know, it's probably a hundred foot, hundred and twenty foot of the pipe. And the pipe is out there, the water line's out there, the hydrant's out there.
Who's gonna pay for it? Who's gonna pay for the hydrant?
You.
Because you don't have it in your budget, so who's gonna pay for it?
How much does a hydrant cost?
Sounds like they have the material.
Eleven copper, six inch tee, a six inch valve, a couple of six inch copper, fourteen tee.
And the manpower to do it.
We were near seven thousand dollars in parts, pipe and hydrant.
We've already bought the equipment, some-
Yeah. The pipe came out of their budget, and that's part of the reason their budget is in such dire straits.
But we've already purchased it.
Right, but the water department would take over the parts and use it elsewhere in town, and it would be credited back against them.
For next year to put in.
I mean, they're just integrating one in out there.
Well, yeah, there's plastic, you don't want plastic pipes sitting out in the sun.
Not except if we got enough money to get the airport next year. I'll tell you, the budget will-
If it helps any, we got two hundred and how many bales of hay off there?
We got two hundred and twenty-six bales of hay approximately.
That's a little better than we did last year, if y'all remember.
Gary said the crops outside is doing really good.
Now, this is inside. He's already-
That's all money that you guys get. It's all helping budgets a lot.
The hay's stacked and put away. He's gonna have to haul it off, yeah, but he's got ten bales to a pile and-
Is that seven thousand dollars?
I don't know what's gonna come in there.
I got another question, too, anyway, about hay. But if we put that in, or whoever puts it in, who meters that water?
It's, the airport, its water is free right now, since there's no meter out there. And we're allowed, I think, he said, like fourteen thousand gallons, and we're nowhere near using that. They don't dig and put pipe in. They'd have to hire people. So that's where the city would, you know, say, and then they'd build the city. So would the city have the backhoe and manpower to do it themselves?
If we did it, couldn't we build them? Could they pay for it?
It's no benefit.
They hire contractors. If they have to do it, they'll hire-
Gentlemen, here's where we're at.
Okay.
This is not on the agenda. We can't make a motion to do anything about it. Let's put it off to the next meeting.
Okay.
Get all your figures together, and let us know what it's supposed to cost. And then we can say whether we're gonna wait till next year or they're in the way.
Like, say, everything, all the materials are bought, all right?
Well, I just heard a valve and a tee and this and that, something adding up to about seven grand.
Where's all the other parts? Where'd they come from?
That's what we're talking about, the seven thousand dollars.
Who has paid for them so far?
Well, they came out of the airport.
For everything?
Yes.
Yeah, just pretty well.
You corrected the one bill when the hydrant was here, so the hydrant did not-
Maybe you measure the distance, so they know how far that trench is. We already purchased it, and they're- Maybe measure the distance, so they know how far that trench is. What we don't have is the manpower to do it. Am I hearing that?
Well, and the hydrant came from our department, but-
Manpower was out there twice, it sounds like. The guys, guys that came out there with the backhoe were scratching their head, wondering why.
As I said-
They was not sent home because of that. They went home for the weekend when I, when Dave and I showed them.
As I said, this is something that's not on the agenda. Let's move it to two weeks from now. Bring us all the figures, and let us know, and then we'll go around something that, this isn't something we can go around now.
One more comment, though. Yeah, fire hydrants are pretty darn important in airports.
Maybe we're gonna have to-
Well, and maybe we need to.
Well, I'll need Jennifer next time to vote on it.
I have no problem putting another one out there. The money's there. No problems at all.
Yes, I don't understand why we're putting them in there. If it's for fire, it should be whoever supplies the water.
Well, they said-
If I wanted a fire hydrant in my place, the city would put one on my corner.
They already put one in. They said that's all they can do is one. They have hydrant out there. They installed when they laid the pipe.
So are we talking about another hydrant, or are just a spigot?
No, it's a hydrant. It's laying out there.
I think maybe we should contact the fire district and ask them who's responsible for putting in a-
We have one.
I think it's pretty well into the park.
Yeah. Well, they want to use it to fill up the plane. Do they have any reimbursement for that? No.
They'd put a meter out there.
According to what their, their last committee meeting for the water district says, if the city wants another meter, they'll have to apply for it, just like anybody else. So are we gonna have to apply for, and pay their, their charge for their meters?
If, if a spray plane comes in, the spray plane operator has to go to the water district and get a-
They meter.
Rent the meter from the water district.
That spray plane can't fill from our hydrant we got now?
No.
Why?
That's over by the new hangar. They did fill that-
They can't go over there with an airplane and fill it up?
They did before, and the FAA, I talked to them, and it was a mess right out in front of the terminal filling our grass.
Don't want the chemicals over there. This is a designated-
Spray-
Same way with that seats firefighter, they spill that crap all over the ground.
The next item that's on the agenda is called a airport master plan. Let me add something here. The master plan dictates where activities at the airport can happen, and it was not in the master plan, so it could not happen where they were filling the planes, so it was against the master plan, and-
So is that master plan, that new hydrant in it?
Uh, no. I don't know.
Does now.
If you approve going forward with the master plan, FAA has reviewed the master plan. It's gone back and forth between our, our airport engineers, SEH, and FAA three different times. Scope of work was sent to them. They sent it back. The corrections were made to the agreement. Went back to FAA, and they had somebody else look at it from the feds, and they found other things that weren't right. So it's gone back and forth three times, so the FAA, as of the thirteenth of June, has said, this is the master plan we agreed to. It's two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars over a several-year process of completing the master plan. Completing the master plan, as well as what Ed referred to, the ALP, which is, which is the airport layout plan. So there's multiple documents. It goes hand in hand with what you approved last meeting for the geo-location stuff that you approved by the agreement last week. So the, in addition to the master plan, the state DOT aeronautics division has provided the grant application that would pay for ninety percent feds, five percent state. So the cost of that two hundred and forty-four thousand dollar master plan is five percent to the city.
How much is that? Figure that out, Earl. Twelve thousand?
Ten thousand.
One thousand.
Where'd that come from?
That's budgeted over several years, so you have a budget in that.
So if we added anything like a fire hydrant to this, is that what you're saying would be possible?
Well, the master plan is just the, you know, what can you have where? It doesn't pay for the installation.
No, but if we added this, we'd have to have that master plan.
I don't know the answer to that. All thousand, two hundred dollars is five percent.
You need a motion to accept this?
Yes, and the, and allow the mayor to sign the grant agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Can I give copy of that master plan, Harley?
Why he's suppressing? Okay.
I'll have to list a email to you, but I haven't done that.
Now, we're gonna hear from you guys in two weeks, so you'll be on, you'll be on the agenda for that.
Okay.
You can either vote it up or vote it down.
Let's move to the build material change order to Allman Street project. Project is done, and it's the final change order.
And it's a change order of a decrease of six hundred and five dollars and thirty cents.
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is this like what we charge them for not doing it for a half year? Six hundred and five dollars?
Yes.
Hundred dollars a day for six days.
There you go.
Motion carried. All right.
Peggy just stepped out.
Perfect time. You knew that was gonna happen. Bids for the asphalt reclamation machine here from DMI, Peggy, is that correct? And you have the road hog machine, is that correct?
I gotta, I gotta make a comment before we start. Tracy, when he put this out for bid, he took from the zipper, word for word, for theirs. So I think if their machine does anything like the zipper does, we have to accept it. And they got, I understand, demonstration on the tenth?
On the tenth, on Thursday morning. I'm not sure exactly what time yet. I'll move that, hopefully tomorrow morning, but we're at probably mid or late morning, just because of time depending on when the truck gets here.
Because Tracy took the specs from the zipper and made it-
I have no problem with that, Craig, but I'm buying a machine that I haven't seen work on our piece of machinery, that it has to hook to, and we're not gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars on something we don't know for sure will work on our machine.
Well, it'll work on our machine. It just has to be a different, we're not gonna find out.
A thirty-day deadline to accept or reject would be the thirteenth of July, so you need to accept or reject bids before the thirteenth. So the demo's on the tenth. You could, one option would be to wait for the demo, and then have a special meeting to consider accepting or rejecting the bid after that before the thirteenth, if you wish.
I don't know how we can reject it if they went from the specs Tracy put in there.
We got a right to reject a little bit.
Not if all the specs are the same thing, how can we legally?
What kind of a transfer-
I don't wanna do that. I just assume you guys do the demo, we look at it, and let's call a special meeting.
I make a motion that we accept this bid, that we tape, postpone accepting a bid until after the tenth, and we have a special meeting on the eleventh to do so. Is that okay with you?
You really don't, you don't really need to have the motion for that, but that's okay.
Okay. You got a motion in the second.
Yep.
So we will award the bids the day, the eleventh.
Do we need to vote on that motion?
Yes.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, the next item, new item for new business is the bids for valve exercising machines?
I haven't seen them, I've not seen them operated yet. I'm working out to see that.
I'll make the motion.
Where, where is that on the radar?
We don't have that.
HD Supply Water Works, it was, it was given out after the bids were done at the last meeting. Should be in your papers on the bottom here. Both bids were done at the same time on the same day, so both bids are on the same sheet.
And we only have the one bid?
Yep.
We also have a letter saying that they are the only ones that get it, that make this machine. So nobody else makes that machine, so-
Do we have-
Nobody else bids it.
Well, who is paying for this?
Water department.
Motion to accept.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All those opposed? Motion carried. All right, the next one is the Fall River County, accept a little bit for Nelson's oil and gas for eight thousand gallons of number two red dye diesel at three thirty-nine per gallon.
And that's just an informational item, the county takes care of the bidding for our fuel at the county shop.
We did the Evans, Director Carl, illustrative committee report.
We didn't have meetings.
Dwight, public works?
Uh, we had the DMI and zipper conversation, discussed the valve exercise machine, I mean, it's moving on. Storm flooding complaints. The alley between sixteenth and seventeenth flooded really bad that last rain, a lot of people got water in their basements.
Sixteenth and seventeenth.
One oh one, South Fifth is another big drainage issue we got, so we've got several of these drainage issues around town. Main Street.
See, I was gonna mention something earlier. But since I sold my house on Sis Street, I moved into the Albany house that we had. And the guy next to me had all of his water drain into my backyard and right to the corner of the house and into the cellar. I don't have a basement. So I helped him out. We built up his retaining wall, fixed it back up and went on with our lives. There's things that other people can do, you don't have to, have the city do it.
Thank you, Greg. This pilot for this, with these flooding problems is that you, no municipality can afford to be in a position to handle every scenario of every type of rain or snow that we've got. Some of these, I agree, they are a constant problem, those are the ones we need to look at. Some of them, this is maybe once this year and then in five years it happens again. So I agree that we need to look at them, but I don't think we need to try and fix everything all the time, but it just doesn't. That one up in Albany's happened a lot. But that's what I'm saying, if it's one that's consistent, then that's the one we need to look at.
We'll just have a committee for all the drainage issues like we talked to James about.
I think our mountain plan that we talked about, that's kind of where it's.
Tracy and Public Works put a thing together for years ago about drainage problems in town. Cause we started addressing one every year and put money towards it.
I'll get up to speed on that. Have a committee.
All right.
Lucky we're getting away easy, didn't we?
You can do business, right?
City cleanup days, we had fifteen loads go to Edgemont and four site dumps. Uh, the water fill station, the mayor wants to look at some more. It was the recommendation of a committee that we put the water fill station where it is now. Just tear the old city shop down and there's some nice plans that are going up for it already. The city already owns the lots, the water fill station's been there forever. That's gonna have to be a council decision. Uh, that's it, guys, thank you.
Thank you. Public safety, Craig?
We didn't have a regular meeting, but Dave and I met on a couple ordinances and I guess we're reading one tonight. So that's all we met on.
Okay, and we'll get to that. And Wes is not, are you, are you done? I don't want to.
Done, done.
Okay. And Wes is not here?
Uh, work continues on the parks master plan, so a lot of you were involved in that, some of the, the public meetings there.
And is that Sunday still open?
I don't think it is.
No, I think it's closed from that.
Yeah.
From this month? Okay.
Illustrative report.
Illustrator report? I thought you already started, so.
I was just answering the question to Wes.
Continue.
In the past, Mayor De Vries had said if an ordinance comes up, it just needs to be talked about, said it's gonna happen at one meeting and then the next meeting, the first reading would go to it and then, you know, so it gives the public about six weeks to discuss an ordinance, so when it gets into a force and somebody comes in and says, we didn't know this was going on, you've got six weeks to do something about it, so this is your first go at a change to the property maintenance code under chapter eighteen. It's taking our current ordinance that says if your grass is twelve inches or more higher, uh, you get notice that it needs to be taken care of and technically you're on notice anyway, cause in the newspaper earlier this year, it said keep your property mowed, if you don't, the city can come in and take care of it, but we give one courtesy notice if we see an area that's over twelve inches, we give a courtesy notice saying you've got ten days to take care of it, if you don't, the city can come in and, and mow it and do it. This ordinance changes that to eight inches. The other thing that this ordinance does is currently we allow large acreage lots to only have to mow the perimeter by twelve foot in. So there's several lots around town that you just see it like the road ditch where it's just mowed one, one mower wide and the center is thirty inches tall. Uh, this takes that out of the ordinance, so that means any large lot in the city limits would have to be mowed in its entirety. And let's see, I guess that's takes care of that thirty inch because if it has to be mowed in its entirety, that goes away, so. Those are the two major changes, a copy of this will be available upon request and will be on the agenda next time for first reading.
And it will also be on the, on the, uh, computer?
On the website?
Website?
Opposed ordinances, sure.
Okay.
Last item I have, uh, and it might be noted in your books that you have here, but five hundred thousand dollars worth of mosquito control grants were given out across the state by the governor. Fall River, Custer County are doing a joint one of fourteen thousand eighty-three dollars of grant money went for spraying of mosquitoes. Edgemont themselves got a four thousand forty-one hundred dollar grant for the city of themselves for, for spraying, so there is some mosquito control going on.
City of Hot Springs did not?
Nope, because we do not have a mosquito control program, so we do not qualify to apply for grants. We, we let the county take care of that one for us.
Yeah, right.
Public safety, he said needs to look at that, so you need to put that on my agenda.
The mayor hasn't said whether you have any committees or not, who's on those committees.
We'll have committees from where?
I, I need at least twenty-four hours.
It's quite on repeat.
That's all of my report.
Okay, and I, can I ask normally a question? If we have annual reports at the name of city council meeting for two thousand, uh, what did we need, eleven and twelve? Twelve is thirteen.
Yep, two thousand twelves is hot off the press on my desk as of this afternoon.
And we'll have thirteen too?
Thirteen's we'll not have, no.
That's due in March.
Yes, ma'am. We are out for, looking for new auditors.
They don't have anything to do with that though. That, that comes from you, Ryan. You do the annual report.
What's been the practice has been that the auditor has been doing the annual reports for the city of Hot Springs for several years.
I wasn't aware of that. I do know her, I'll speak to that, but I'm not aware of that.
She became a finance officer.
Right, but she still has to finish the annual report for last year.
Only for twenty twelve, only for twenty twelve. Cause what we were doing was part of the audit was for the auditor to do the annual reports.
Could she also lead with the city council at a meeting?
Not the current auditor anymore, no.
I mean, to go over what she is turning in, what she still lacks.
She's got it done.
You, you got everything.
She's got the twenty twelve audit done and that's all she was hired to do through the twenty twelve year. So we have to hire somebody who's completed twenty thirteen years on.
A new auditor.
Just another comment too, I know that Don still has the personnel manual, we were working on getting that updated too and that was something that we still have to finish.
That'll be coming up at our next meeting.
If you're the same committee.
I definitely.
Thank you for that, Craig.
As a reminder, when you update that personnel, I think the internet is outdated.
We're going, we're just doing a lot of the updates in accordance with what the state does. So that ours is going to reflect a lot of stuff that the state.
You guys might have something that you don't like there.
I have a lot of stuff. I am interested in that one though, so I, I do hope we can update that. Um, I do not have a report yet, I will have a report next time. Um, I just want everyone to know that I've worked with or talked to, I think everyone at this, the table. And I'm really excited about this team, I think everyone here really has commitment and desires to do what's best for Hot Springs and I'm really, really excited to work with all of you and I'll look forward to it when we pose.
Good. You're a good juror.
Second?